Let's resume.
Again, one more time, next up is the Human Resources Department on page 455, and Julie Ayers is here, the Human Resources Director, to present their budget.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm very pleased tonight to present an overview of the Human Resources Budget. Human Resources Department's mission is to establish the optimal work environment for obtaining sustained high productivity, continuous improvement, organizational renewal, and exceptional customer service. We provide services in the following seven areas. The first is the benefits area, and this includes our self-insured health insurance program and our self-insured workers' comp program, classification and compensation, employee and labor relations, recruitment and retention, human capital management with business operations, training and development, and safety management. And the source of funding for the entire Human Resources, all of these program areas, is the general fund. In alignment with the council's goal of enhancing current services, we focus on managing our benefit programs and cost containment strategies, provide services that allow us to attract and retain the highest quality employees, provide workforce planning and employment services for the employees and organization, create a safe and hazard-free work environment, provide training programs to enhance the knowledge and skill base of the city's workforce, review and identify proper job classifications and compensation structures, and manage the HR systems and business operations that support the operation's needs. The City of Peoria had adopted, in the past, four pillars of service excellence, and for fiscal year 14, we will have a special emphasis on workforce development that includes two of these pillars, and that would be customer service and diversity inclusion. And this is reflected in our supplemental training requests. We're also very proud of our leadership development program, and this is a chart that shows our current four levels within the program. The aspiring supervisor program is for individuals in the organization who have not yet taken on supervisor responsibilities but want to learn and see if they're interested in doing so. The supervisor certification program is for current line-level supervisors to make sure they have the tools necessary to perform their jobs well. And then the advancing leadership development program is for the higher-level managers, deputy directors in the organization, who we would like to see be the future directors within the city. And I'm proud to say that we had our first group cohort of the advancing leadership development program just finished. They've been working on a project that very shortly will be brought before council for them to make a presentation and a proposal, so we're very excited about that. As far as budget changes, we do have a few budget additions. The first is to add, on an ongoing basis, part-time seasonal employee background checks, and this would be to perform approximately 750 background checks on our part-time seasonal and volunteer workers in community services. We believe that when we bring someone on to work with our constituents, that we should be doing this type of background search on them before allowing them to provide services. And so this would be a new, ongoing cost for the department. The second is a one-time cost to have an initiative this year on our workforce inclusion and engagement program, and this would be done in conjunction with the diversity committee and the Human Resources Department. Also asking for a $30,000 one-time to do some customer service training initiatives, and also to continue to focus on our leadership development program, including succession planning. Another request would be a one-time request to do an employee satisfaction survey. We had our last employee satisfaction survey done back in 2009, and our request is to actually use the same firm that just completed the citizen survey for Peoria. They are affiliated with the ICMA and are very well-known for providing also employee surveys, and we'll have great benchmark information for you when we get the information back to compare to, not only how we believe we're doing, but compared to other cities around the nation. And then last is to use some revenue from our vending machine programs to enhance our employee appreciation event that we handled during the year. And so with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera?
Mr. Manager, I have a question before I have questions for HR. What is the process for either removing something or adding? Just mention it to you and staff during these discussions.
For example, if you wanted to make an addition to a budget.
Yes.
I think now would be the time to mention that, and what we will do is, or deletion, obviously. What we would do is make note of it, and it would probably be, one of the budget staff will note these, and we'll do that throughout the process. So at the end of the time, the reconciliation of the budget, the council would ultimately vote to include or exclude those items, depending on the case, when you come to closure on the budget at the end of the process.
Thank you. I have a question about the employee satisfaction survey. Can you go into more details of what that is going to incorporate?
Certainly. The last employee survey was conducted in 2009, and it was administered in-house. This proposal is to use the National Research Center, and it would consist of approximately 70 questions delivered in an online format, and it would require a minimal staff time to administer. Another benefit of using an outside firm is that, unlike last time where the responses were anonymous, they were still coming to a city website, to a city portal, and so by having an outside firm collect the information, I think it gives the process a little bit more credibility. The categories covered in the survey would be job satisfaction, supervisory relationships, work group collaboration and cohesion, employee productivity, development opportunities, organizational communication, structure and effectiveness, and physical work environment. The process would take 10 weeks upon our initiation of the process, and we do have the ability to add some customized questions. Because of the benefit of using a firm that's using national benchmarks, you don't want to stray too far from the standardized questions, but we do have the opportunity to ask some very specific questions that we could target to our workforce specifically. The total cost is estimated to be just under 14,000, and there's quite a few number of reports that would be available for us to dig into the data, you know, to look at department levels in addition to organizational-wide. This is an organization that's used by many other local municipalities and with good feedback and reviews.
Thank you. Page 469. 513000.
I'm sorry, which?
For the unemployment claims?
Oh, yes.
My question is, with the, you know, the economy hasn't been that well, and I understand that employee relations issues increased. Is that one of the reasons we have that amount set aside for unemployment?
What I understand is that during the recession, and we had some programs in place in the city, that we had to increase through the use of a supplement our unemployment insurance in previous years. This, I believe, is reflecting that the supplement has gone away, and we're actually reinstating a more traditional level of unemployment insurance within the city.
I'm going to move to workforce development and tuition reimbursement. There's less opportunities for our employees. There's not a lot of opportunities to go to other cities or promote. What are we doing as a city? What is HR doing to improve workforce development, provide training for our employees? Can you speak to that?
Certainly. We have a real dedication to our workforce, and we do that through, whether it's employee appreciation events, through training and development opportunities, and tuition reimbursement is a subcategory of our training program. Based on some reduced budget areas, the tuition reimbursement program had been cut in previous years, but I am pleased to say that we are an organization that continues to offer it, and that isn't necessarily true across the valley. It is an area that we'd like to see, at some point in the future, I would like to see some of that reinstated if possible, but I do think that we have a number of employees that use that program and get much benefit out of it. Our general training program hits more bodies within the city, and as you saw through our leadership programs, we have a lot of soft skill training that's available for our employees, but we also have some technical training, safety programs, and a lot of other things that come out of that portion of our budget.
Now, on the workforce development side, do you feel that that's an area that is adequately budgeted, that we have enough resources?
I do. I think that we are able to leverage those dollars in a way that provides a good organizational benefit. We're going to be looking with some of the supplemental one-time dollars, if those are included in the final budget. I think that we'll really be able to do some good initiatives, again, with regard to customer service, workforce, inclusion, and engagement, and it will give us the opportunity to come out with some "train the trainer" and really use some creativity this year to, you know, work within the culture and have some true changes within the workforce.
Now, I want to focus on tuition reimbursement. I know over the years tuition reimbursement has gone down. Can you speak about the program? How many employees are involved?
The tuition reimbursement program, at its height, included a budget of $250,000. The current year's budget and what we are requesting for next fiscal year is $125,000 budget. We have approximately 65 employees who are actively using that benefit, but in order to make sure that we do not go over the budget, we've begun using an open enrollment process for tuition reimbursement, which means, at the beginning of the year, employees who are eligible tell us what they would like to have. Over the course of the next fiscal year, we take the budget allocation divided among the employees who wish to participate. So it is one of these items, the more people who participate, the less the benefit will be per the individual employee who comes forward. So it's one of those items that it's important for us to stay within budget, and that was the best option to manage that.
And what's the purpose of tuition reimbursement, and why is it important?
Tuition reimbursement is used, it's really for employee morale and satisfaction. When an employee is in a position, you know, that may not be their career path, they may, you know, look around the city and say, "I'd really like to be an engineer. I'd really like to, you know, have a different role in the organization." So tuition reimbursement allows them to go to college, obtain an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, or even a master's degree, that will help them personally grow and develop, but we also look for them to be in programs that are going to enhance their, you know, also value to the city.
Because it's, the amount allocated is 120,000, and there's about 60-plus employees involved. The cap is 80%, but because of the amount of employees, that percentage is at 31%?
That's correct. The policy itself allows the tuition to be reimbursed up to 80%. Because of these open enrollment processes that I mentioned, and having to divide the budget among eligible employees, the current fiscal year's actual allocation per eligible employees, 31% of their tuition being paid.
Mr. Manager, I requested some information from HR. I think that number, the percentage, 31% is low, and I want to throw out a suggestion, and this is one of the items that I'm going to bring forward. I think 50% of tuition reimbursement is a number that I, as a council member, want to reach, and I asked HR for a calculation, and in order to fund for the estimated employees who are going to participate, 50% of their academic program would have to increase that budget of $183,000. So it would be an increase of $58,000. I support this program, and I would like to see that budget item be moved up to 183,483, so that the employees who go through tuition reimbursement can be reimbursed 50%.
Okay. What we'll do then is note this amount, Mr. Rivera, so that we have it available for the final reconciliation discussion with the council.
Thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Yes? I have some questions here, but a little bit of follow-up on that one. Tuition reimbursement, and you're off to school, that's beyond the work time, right? They don't get released work time.
That's correct. The tuition reimbursement program would happen on the employees' own time. Our workforce development programs would happen on the city's time.
Thank you. I got a question on 458, and it's looking at conducting exit interviews, and I see you set a target of 85. Why isn't the target higher? And I see in 12, only 62%, and went up a little bit in 13. How come we don't capture almost everyone?
Yes, thank you for that question. This is an area that we would have set a goal to improve upon, and basically, when employees voluntarily depart the city, it's a good opportunity for us to learn a little bit more about their employment experience and how, you know, how we're doing as an organization and what we can do to improve. Sometimes when people are on their way out the door, they become very busy and trying to finish their projects, and they haven't been as available and willing to come and meet with us. We try to do these one-on-one, in person, with our Human Resources consultants. We have not been as aggressive in following up and trying to get some phone contact once they physically leave the city, and so one of our goals this year is to, if we can't get them one-on-one, you know, during their notice period, that we'll follow up and try to conduct that over the phone after they leave.
Over the phone, and maybe even the internet.
And maybe even the internet.
With the possibility. That's a good idea. I'm looking at, on page 459, the personal services, they've gone up 6.23%, but the number of employees has stayed the same, so how come that increase?
The majority of that increase is related to the compensation that occurred in fiscal year 13. I'm sorry, that is not the majority of the increase. That was fiscal year 13. Let me think. I have to think about that one.
Yeah, I think I can answer that.
Oh, that would be it, yeah.
You'll see changes in the personnel services due to, it could be compensation expected, it could be the retirement and health increases, and it could also be if that department changed personnel throughout that fiscal year, then the new budget year, you could get a different change in their salaries. If people had left and someone else came in, maybe it's at a higher rate.
I'm asking because this one is bigger, and there's no difference in the number of employees, but there could be different employees, right? Okay.
Sounds good.
Don't go over that high.
Mr. Leone? Oh, sorry. Are you done, Mr. Ames?
Not quite. I'm looking at that Human Resources on 461, the part-time seasonal employee background checks. Is this someone who's already on board and using part-time, or is this just going to be totally part-time? Because I don't see part-time in your staffing.
This is actually, if I can expand on that, this is actually the supplement for us to begin using a third-party vendor to conduct background checks on our part-time and seasonal employees through the Community Services Department.
Okay. So this is contractual? It's going to be contractual?
That's correct. We use an online service.
Thank you.
Mr. Leone?
I didn't catch them all.
Sure. That one?
On that recommendation request, workforce, what is that, 70,000? What is that?
The workforce inclusion and engagement would be to do an initiative during this next fiscal year through our Diversity Committee and through the HR Training Department to do items surrounding diversity, employee engagement, and inclusion. We try to do, once every year, a focus on a different initiative, whether it's, you know, ethics, and we have the four pillars that we've been focusing on. So this next year is time to do the workforce inclusion and engagement, and we wanted to do something special and meaningful as compared to maybe simply having, you know, an online 30-minute training program. We really wanted to do something that would work within the culture of the city.
And did you mention training, citywide training? Did you had talked about that?
That would be our initiative on customer service for this next fiscal year, in addition to succession planning and some leadership development.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Carlet?
Thank you. I have a question about the health insurance, self-insurance fund. It's increasing, the claims are increasing $400,000, or you're proposing that they will. Can you tell me why? Is that because insurance is higher, is it because we're expecting more claims?
Yes, I'd be glad to. On the health insurance, we are renewing at a 4.4% increase, and that's a combination of what we call trend. And so that would be our own historical trend of claims, but also the ever-increasing cost of health insurance claims. And so you may have the same number of claims, but the severity, or even just simply the cost of the doctor's visit, has gone up since the previous year. This is actually a reduction from what we were expecting based on national trend and even our historical trend with the city, and I believe our assumption, when we went into this process, was 6%, and we were real pleased when it came in. I know it's still an increase, but we were pleased when it came in at 4.4%.
Okay, well, it's 667,000 overall for all of these, for everything in this category, but just the claims are the 400,000. So, all right, so if you're looking at just trends, then, can we expect, then, in fiscal year 2015, to be going up another 400,000 or higher?
If not more. National trend has been sitting around 6% to 8% for quite some time, and there has, even with wellness programs and different initiatives, you can trim a little bit off of that each year, but the trend is inevitably continuing to go up.
And do we have any suggestions for how we might combat this huge expense?
It's a constant analysis in question. We have consultants that we work with closely. We go to conferences and watch all of the literature to see, you know, best practices and what we can do to, you know, constantly be looking to reduce this trend. It's something that we're very diligent about and will continue to be, but I'm afraid I don't have a magic answer to make that stop increasing.
It's one of those things that is going to be the death of us. I mean, literally, it's a really, really large expense. I know that there are cities who are looking at, or who have successfully done clinics, and those clinics help with workmen's comp testing, they help with all kinds of, the normal kinds of things that people go to doctors for on a regular basis, coughs, colds, flu, those kinds of things. I would suggest that we look into that. There's nothing else that's going to help. $400,000 a year is unaffordable for us, unaffordable, and even if it's higher than that, $600,000, which, you know, could easily happen, and especially if the city grows, we're going to be in big trouble here. And I know that wellness programs are really productive and very, very beneficial, and they really do work, but they're not going to overcome this kind of an increase. So I'd like to see something on this, on clinics. I know that they've worked in other cities. I know Goodyear is, has been very successful and has seen huge reductions in their healthcare costs because of it. So I'd like to see something like that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, we will be moving to the municipal court budget. That is located on page 537, and Judge A. is here to help us out tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and members of the departments, and thank you, Ms. Gregory, for all the help. I'm happy to speak to the group this evening on the city court and its budget requests for the year. It's very fitting for us to start with a photo of the building, and always, Mayor Barrett and Council. We've expressed our appreciation to the city and the citizens of Peoria for their vision of allowing the court facility to be increased in last year's construction project, help of Mr. Swenson, Mr. Kemp. It's a remarkable work environment, and all of the employees there express their gratitude all the time to us. We have a fairly straightforward department overview, our grouping of the administration, case management, court security, and the community outreach and part of what we do with restraining orders. As you can imagine, like the other city departments, these are essentially interacting and seamless web functionalities. That is the main structure of what the court does, and of course, our funding comes both from general fund and from what are referred to as the Court Enhancement Funds, which are surcharges that are assessed against fines and fees. Our primary council goals are met. We always envision enhancement of current services, good customer service, and always endeavor to attain a good image of the court and its leadership capabilities. Our service outcomes focus on providing fair justice for the community, giving good legal representation, and meeting the requirements of due process, and always operating under the constraints of the legal environment and the state and Arizona Supreme Court requirements for those outcomes. There is just an item for budget addition. We are always busy with ongoing projects and one-time projects. In the budget, you'll see the request for what are referred to as the three temporary contract judicial assistance, and this is approximately $165,000, and it does help to clarify this, to observe to Mayor and Council that the funding for this will be from court enhancement sources, so this, in effect, is a zero-budget impact to the overall general fund and to our outcomes. We continue to look at our interaction with the Police Department and our interaction with IT, as Council Member Carlet mentioned. We also look for methods of getting more electronic use of technology, leveraging the availability of keeping paper to a minimum. The legal environment sometimes competes with that, but that's another digression. That's very much the overview of what's involved, and I'd be more than happy to answer any types of questions that come to mind.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Ames?
Yeah, I'm looking at the performance report, number of cases adjudicated.
Yes.
And you do explain it can go over 100%. Can you tell me a little bit, you got cases closed, and is that divided by cases opened?
The percentage can exceed 100% in one year, if that's the call of the question, and that's because of the comparison of how many cases are filed within a fiscal year boundary versus the number of cases. Often, what that excess of 100% describes is where we've had cases from prior years that have finally come to fruition and completion. So if someone has a case filed in year 2010, but then through some delays or some process, or for example, if they go, become an abscondor, and that case doesn't get to the court until a later fiscal year, that will still be embraced as a completion in that year.
Close. Okay, but it is a division. That's meant the cases closed divided by cases opened, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Because we use that slash in a lot of ways. No. I'm looking at your personal services. It's gone up 11.59%, but you have the same staffing level. Can you explain that? This is the highest I've seen increase so far.
I can answer that, Council Member. That is related to the supplemental that the judge just talked about on the judicial assistance that are funded through the Court Enhancement Fund. So those additions are approximately 160,000, so that's the biggest portion of that personal services line increase.
Okay. But it's the same people?
No, those are additional part-time contract people. But it's funded in that personal services line as well.
Okay, but the contract services have gone down, that amount, so why wouldn't it be under contract?
Yeah, these are contract people that, because of the way they're hired, get put in the personal services line versus a contract where you might use an agency. Then you would see them in the contractual services line.
It's kind of like a technical thing.
Right. They actually get paid out of the personal services line because they're usually just hired with that individual and not a contractual, not a company.
I'll try to keep track.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Carlet?
Yes, I just have a comment. On all of your supplemental requests, they don't have the revenue offset completed, so I couldn't just look at this and say, "Okay, that's already being paid for." I really love this revenue offset line. I like it a lot. It's really great when you look and you see the expense. It's really great when you look and you see the expense, and then you say, okay, well, we've covered for that already with revenue. So I would just like to say, if we could always have the revenue offset line filled in, well
Yes.
As often as possible.
We apologize, that was an oversight, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Ms. Rivera.
Judge, there's a section, a small section, about community relations. Can you talk about that?
These are some of the, Councilmember Rivera, yes, some of those items involve some of the court programs where we will have presentations or allow visits to the court, and also some of the interactions we'll have with regard to our seminars and legal classes. So we tend to interact and call that community services.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, sir. It's always a pleasure to have you here.
It's good to see you again. I'm impressed.
Thanks.
Okay, continuing on, next we have the attorney, Steve Kemp, here. His section starts on page nine.
Mr. Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight and present to you the city attorney's budget. The city attorney's office, we function as an legal advisor to the city council, all of its boards, commissions, and the city's elected and appointed officials. We also serve as the prosecutor of all court cases in the city's municipal court, which occur, and really, all of our services focus on helping the city comply with state, federal, and local law. In essence, we are the compliance center of the city, so to speak, whether it be on a civil side or on a criminal side. We also operate the city's claims management program, as you can see on the departmental overview, which is the general liability insurance program of the city. And that is discussed in a separate budget, that's separate from the city attorney's general fund budget. And you can also see on the criminal side, we have both a prosecution program, which is a prosecution program, as well as a victim assistance program, which is the mandated program that we provide services to crime victims after the case has been filed in court all the way through the court system. Now, crime victim services for cases involving felonies are provided through the county attorney's office. In terms of the service discussion, our services really relate to the leadership and image of the city. Essentially, as the compliance function, we have a function that ensures that the city complies with all federal, state, and local laws. We also get involved extensively within the governmental affairs in the supporting their mission and providing them assistance, as well as supporting a number of other departments in their mission. Obviously, we serve as the city council's lawyers. That certainly is one of the service outcomes, as well as in terms of requests for legal services from the various client departments that, through the city manager. And key service outcomes, when you look on the civil side, the risk side, obviously is insurance premiums. Insurance premiums really are a function of two things. One, the level of risk we present, and two, the function of the market. If the market is hardening, like it is now, and it's beginning to harden significantly, that has an impact on insurance premiums. The other side of it, however, is what kind of risk you are. This city happens to be a very outstanding risk in terms of its management of its general liability claims, and we have been able to maintain consistency in insurance premiums. In terms of the criminal division, again, our responsibility there is to enforce the criminal laws in which the Peoria Municipal Court has jurisdiction, and we do that through the prosecution of criminal cases and assisting code enforcement with their cases in the municipal court. Deferred prosecution is a program where we take certain cases and we defer them out of the criminal justice system. It's really an alternative to prosecution. The budget changes, you will see that there's a risk management software and systems upgrade. This is necessary because our existing risk management program is no longer compatible. It's not compatible with Windows 7, and will no longer be supported in January. Our problem is, most of our other programs were now running into issues that they're not compatible with Windows XP, because we need to do the upgrade so that, otherwise, I'm going to have some people with some computers that can only run some programs and not other programs. It doesn't work. We've been very involved with IT, and that's the reason for that supplement. The other supplement within the risk budget is, we have one particular case, the Demaree case, and this is a case that achieved a lot of public notoriety involving a lawsuit against the city, against a police officer, and against Walmart. And because of some conflicts, we've had to have outside counsel. The case, we've had four cases out of this. We've been in, up to the Ninth Circuit once. We've been up to the Arizona Court of Appeals twice. We, and we have been in three different branches of Superior Court. We've prevailed to date on all of it, but it keeps on going. And unfortunately, because we have the conflicts, it invokes the outside counsel cost. And with that, I would be pleased to answer any questions that you have in detail about the city attorney's office budget.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera.
Page 22, the last item, contractual services.
Yes.
Can you go into detail about that item? It's for $18,000.
In terms of the supplement?
I'm not sure if it's a supplement, but
No, this is your base. It's for legal services.
Yes. This is on page 20, the legal services, outside counsel, exceptional cases.
Oh, no, this is actually, he's asking about your base that's under page 22, under your civil division.
Okay, in the civil division, yes. What drove the cost on that is, is that we use that for outside counsel when we have a conflict in the civil side where we're not able to represent either a city department or a city official. Last year, we had a case where we had three conflicts, which is what drove the expenses way over the adopted budget.
Are you talking about ethics complaints?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what drove those expenses up. Ethically, lawyers cannot, when a lawyer has a conflict, we are precluded under the ethical rules for lawyers, which are adopted by the Supreme Court and binding on the profession, from representing two clients. In essence, lawyers can't have two masters. You can only have one. And when we have that, we have to get separate counsel, and in some cases, particularly cases representing the counsel, usually what it invokes is, is I'm precluded, and my office is precluded, from representing anyone, because the preclusion is office-wide. It's not lawyer by lawyer, it's office-wide, and that's what invokes that.
I'm happy to hear that we got that one right now. That
Yeah, so I'm hoping that we will not be expending any excess money this year.
Page 35, the item on top, 520001.
Yes. This is, within the insurance reserve budget, what we do is, is that we break, the city carries a $1 million self-insured retention. This basically means, much like you have deductible on your car insurance, we have a self-insured retention of $1 million, which is our deductible, so to speak. We break that down into different categories because we want to track it. We want, legal fees apply against that deductible, as do damages, as do cost of litigation, and so this is the legal fees proportion of that which we break down. And then the city also carries what we call a $3 million aggregate, which means in a single year that we will incur no more than $3 million in payments that the city's responsible for, and after the $3 million, the next, all of the next dollars, regardless of the claim, are the responsibility of our excess insurance.
Are you discussing 52001?
Yes. And the reason I'm breaking that down and going into that discussion is, this is a component of the self-insured retention.
Okay.
You'll see a whole series of items. This is one of those components that make up the amounts that we budget for self-insured retention. But we track, we don't just have a big item called self-insured retention, because you wouldn't know what it is. We track it by components.
The language that says, usually due to conflict of interest, what, why is that part of
Okay, the reason that we have conflicts of interest is, say, for example, if we have a civil rights claim against the city, where an individual is alleging that we violated their federal constitutional civil rights. Generally, we are not able to represent both the city and the employee, because the courts have said the claims against the employee are personal, and the city, the claims are only against the city. So when we get a civil rights claim, unless we are absolutely convinced that we have no issues of liability, we have to retain separate counsel for the employee. We've actually had a couple of these where we've had to retain separate counsel for employees separate from the city, and that's what invokes that.
In regards to outside counsel, does a city have any control in trying to reduce costs, or is it one of those situations where we don't have any control?
No, we have, we use a very, very structured process. First, we go out every three to four years and solicit qualified law firms. We then ask them to identify what their costs are. We do not pay any more than the rate that they, the lowest rate that they charge any other government. For example, some firms might say, well, our hourly rate is $400 an hour, but we charge the state of Arizona $250 an hour. Our position is, you charge the city of Peoria $250 an hour. We don't pay any more. Secondly, we look in, on each lawsuit, because we don't want partners' billiness. Our firm partners and big firms are very expensive. We want them to make the best use of their services. We go through the bills, and if there's something that an associate can do, we expect them to use an associate. If there's something that doesn't require a lawyer that a paralegal can do, we expect them to use a paralegal. We had a bill this last year where a firm billed us for a whole series of legal research, where we said, wait a second, this is all really interesting stuff, and as a city attorney, I find it all really great, but it's not really related to the client, and we're not going to pay it. You need to take it off the bill. And we review each bill, not just my staff, but I personally review the bills before I sign off on them, and one of the reasons is because we want to make sure that we are using those dollars in the most effective way possible.
I want to add a little bit, what I meant was not having to go to outside counsel at all, that's what I was referring to.
We very, we try not to. For example, right now, we have two cases, both cases have conflicts. And then we have one civil item, the PSP item, which quite honestly is simply an issue of, we have more demand right now in that area than I have resources, and it doesn't make sense to add the resources where we can address it by using outside counsel in a single case.
So we're doing everything we can.
We are doing everything we can. I don't, and I would much rather do cases inside than send them outside. I don't like using outside lawyers unless there's a good business reason for it.
Public records. Are we, how are we doing that area?
Public records is a
Because I know you've said that the public record requests are going up.
Yeah, they are a gargantuan growth area. We are averaging roughly two public records requests a day. So, and we, last year, we tracked the hours. We spent over 600 hours of time just on public records request. What we do is, we've done a number of things to be more efficient. First, within my office, our business analyst developed an electronic form, so we can actually have people fill out a form electronically, it can be processed in the clerk's office electronically, transmitted to the department electronically, the records created electronically, and sent back to the city attorney's office for release to the requested electronically. So we are looking at every way possible we can reduce the use of paper, and in fact, most of our public records requests we respond to electronically, because it's not an efficient use of time or resources to use paper. And quite honestly, if we did it, the sheer volume of the number of records, if we did it by paper, I would be in here with a gargantuan supplement for my printing and copying budget, because it would go through the roof.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Ms. Ray.
Yes, I have a few questions. I'm on page 12, and I'm looking at your performance report, and I'm looking under the non-domestic violence and domestic violence criminal cases, and you have your target at 1,150. I assume your target is less than that? Isn't that what's supposed to be? And you don't want to get to that?
Okay.
Or are you just recording what happens?
Honestly, I would prefer that we have no domestic violence cases
Right.
In the city of Peoria, but realistically, to have a target of zero, I don't think realistic targets.
Well, of course not. Shouldn't that be less than 1,150? Wouldn't that clarify?
Yes, we look, we look at how these cases trend, we look at past years, and we look at the trending, and that's how we establish a target, because we actually take this, and this dictates to us how we look at our resources and how we look at our budget. So we look at this all based on what we really expect.
And the way you operate to reduce it is by community awareness services?
Community awareness?
Correct.
Absolutely. Community awareness and community services. Victims Assistance Coordinator works with victims. One of the things we're looking at is, can we do other programs using some forfeiture funds to assist in providing even more awareness to crime victims as to how the resource is out there? Because many times, the police don't respond to the first domestic violence incident. They respond to the 10th. And if you can begin to deal with those incidents before they elevate to a police response, it benefits the community as a whole.
But your target is less than what's been occurred.
Less, that's absolutely correct.
Maybe this is similar to the last category. I notice you have more in-house, you're paying more in-house and less through contractual services, and your, but your staff has stayed about the same.
What page?
And you got an overall lower, so it's really because you expect to use less contractual?
Councilmember, I think I can answer. There was some items in the FY13 budget that were one-time, so those came off, especially in the insurance premium division. So those came off, so you'd reduce that division by 6%, and you're probably seeing that as a hole in the negative 2%.
And you got the risk management on page 17, your supplemental.
Yes.
And this is, this is why the risk management budget is higher, right?
Yes, the first supplement is the software upgrade, and then the second is simply to address the outside legal costs, and primarily in the Demaree case, which is the case that's driving that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Council, thank you very much.
You're getting there.
Next up is the police department, and Chief Roy Mentor is here. We are looking at page 649.
Thank you, Katie. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Police Department's budget, once again, is a very steady budget. We, if you look at the department's organizational overview, nothing's changed. We're still divided into two divisions, Services Division and Operations Division. Operations Division basically involves patrol services, and then, of course, criminal investigations. And then our Support Operations, or Special Operations Support Section, which is basically the SWAT team, the traffic unit, the narcotics unit. And then on the other side, we have the Services Division, which is, of course, communications, dispatch. You've got Administrative Services, which involves the budget and also records, and then Neighborhood Services, which involves code, animal services, and our park rangers. Once again, this year, we're proud of the fact that in 2012, we saw a reduction in overall crime, both violent crime and property crime. Overall, property crime decreased overall about 2%, violent crime about 1.5%, and an overall decrease in crime in the city of about just over 2%. Some of our primary council goals, of course, the first one is community building, engaging internal and external stakeholders in cooperative problem solving. If you look at some of the key measures that we've been using, they've been very, very effective and very popular in the community. Providing police officers at Peoria High School campuses, as I'm sure you're aware, we now have school resource officers assigned to all four Peoria Unified School District high schools in the city of Peoria. Crime prevention, information, and education to the community. The programs that we have pushed out to the community have been and continue to be very popular with members of our community. Crimereports.com continues to be a very popular program where people can go online and view crime reports and crime incidents that have happened in their neighborhood. Of course, we've really been pushing our social media programs lately, our Twitter account, our Facebook been pushing our social media programs lately, our Twitter account, our Facebook account, and then also our mobile phone app. We've really, really gotten very positive responses on our mobile phone app. And then the newest program that we have that we've been communicating to members of our public, is the Crime Shield program, and that one is really taking off. And people at community meetings are very excited about the Crime Shield program. School safety programs, of course, we have completed tabletop exercises in all Peoria Unified School District schools. We had a debriefing yesterday with Dr. Santorelli. He's very pleased with the outcome of the tabletop exercises in all the schools, and we will continue those. We'll continue on the path of increasing or maintaining our tabletop exercises next year. And then also our Patrol Officer Liaison Program, where every school in the city of Peoria has a patrol officer that's assigned to the school as their liaison officer. Utilization of our volunteers has been extremely popular. We have gone from just over 20 volunteers in the city to, to date, we have 61 volunteers. People who are volunteering and doing various duties from working at the front desk, answering the telephones, doing reports. We have a volunteer who takes care of the maintenance for all of our bicycles that the officers ride. We have five volunteers who assist our Victim Assistance Coordinator. We've got volunteers who take care of the maintenance for our vehicles and driving the vehicles back and forth to the municipal operations center. They also assist with our Vacation Watch program. To date, our volunteers have saved the city just over $220,000 by their volunteer hours that they continue to contribute to the city. Our goal is to try and get up to a minimum of 100 volunteers. We're at 61 right now, and we feel by the end of the year, we will at the very minimum be at 80. Our goal is to be at 100 volunteers in the city. New additions to our budget, of course, we've already talked about the addition of the park ranger for Pioneer Park. If you look, there's a one-time cost and then also an ongoing cost. The ongoing cost basically involves salary and benefits for the park ranger for Pioneer Park. Replacement of police vehicles, some of you may know that Ford has stopped making the very popular Crown Victoria police vehicles. So several law enforcement agencies are looking at shifting to another vehicle. We are currently looking at the Chevy Tahos and also the Ford Explorers. Unfortunately, there's no way for us to convert the equipment that's currently in the Crown Victorias to those vehicles. It just won't fit. So we're going to have to retrofit those vehicles and actually purchase additional equipment to go in those vehicles. The fuel cost increase that you see there is an item that's been underfunded for a while, and we need to bring that to the table to have that funded on an ongoing basis. We, it hasn't been funded at an appropriate level, and we're seeing our fuel costs. And what we've been trying to do in the past is try and find under, other funds in the department fund to try and make up for the additional cost in fuel. So we're bringing that forward to the council. Other additional budget additions, e-citation program. One of the things that we're looking at is expanding our e-citation program. E-citation basically involves handheld devices that currently our 11 traffic officers use. It's a handheld device where they basically swipe the driver's license, and they can also scan the information on the vehicle registration. It automatically goes in. There's a drop-down menu. They pick the violation. You can also take a photo of the traffic violator, and you can also record any statements that the traffic violator makes. You take this and you hit a button, and it automatically prints the citation out in the car. You have the person actually sign for the citation on the electronic ticket writer. It then prints out the citation. You hand them the citation. When you go back to the station at the end of your shift, you put this in a docking station, and it wirelessly transfers the information over to the courts. So we see this as a very efficient way to use for traffic enforcement and traffic citations. It's been very successful for our traffic officers, and we're looking to expand that to include also our patrol And then the last one is analytical software that we're looking at. We're really aggressively moving towards predictive policing and looking for things that we can do to assist us with better deployment of our resources out on the streets. We're looking at a couple of programs that a couple of companies out there offer where they will come in and take your information, this is your records management system, and analyze it, and give you a very, very, very great idea of where the majority of your crime is occurring and where you need to deploy the majority of your resources. So we'd like to use some funds out of our asset forfeiture account to take a look at this program and see how beneficial it will be for us here in the city. With that, that concludes my program, and I'll be prepared to address any questions you have.
Mr. Leonie?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Just a couple of quick questions. I like this park ranger and the Pioneer Park. Now, is he going to be there? Now, how many, how many, how many does that make, park ranger we have now?
Park rangers? That, that would be the fifth one. We have four right now in the supervisor.
Now, will he be at, at this Pioneer Park full-time? Or is he going to be driving around?
The plan right now is similar to Rio Vista, is to have this park ranger, a park ranger, assigned to that park full-time.
Okay. Because, you know, I think that's one of my biggest things is park rangers because I think we need them. We get so many parks that I get a lot of complaints, like in Country Meadows Park, that he's there, but he's not there long enough. But fortunately, the police comes by every now and then and circles the whole park, which the people see, and they, they like that. So I was just concerned that, you know, I got nothing against park ranger. I think we need park rangers in all these parks. Now, that ongoing and that one-time, how do you figure that? What's the one-time? I see it here, but-
Yeah, the one-time, if you look on page 665, Councilmember Leonie, the one-time basically involves the computer that goes in the car, the software licensing for the computer, and the docking station that goes in the car. And then also the vehicle and the radio for the park ranger.
And the ongoing is what?
The ongoing is primarily salary and benefits, but also some maintenance fees, and then also some other fees that are associated with the computer and software licensing.
So every time we build a new park, are we going to be hiring a new park ranger?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure we've made a decision on that one yet, Councilmember.
I mean, I don't, I don't mind. I was just throwing it out. The other thing I have is neighborhood service. Now, is that $30,000? Is that?
I'm sorry, which page are you on?
I'm on that 663. The blue recommendation requests.
Okay, are you referring to the lot cleanup?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
Now, is that $30,000? Is that for the whole year? Or is that for all the lots? I mean, explain-
That's for the entire fiscal year. Yes, sir.
So every lot, how much, how much would it cost for per lot? You don't know?
I don't have the cost broke out per lot.
Okay. So what happened when you ran out of $30,000? You just don't do it no more? Is that it?
Well, what we've seen is, we've seen a decrease in the use of this, these funds. We've seen actually the number of lots that we're having to clean up actually decrease as opposed to increasing. So we feel that this is an adequate amount of funding for this fiscal year.
I know. They just finished one up on 111th Avenue and Butler. They did a great job. They had a whole pile. People called me up and thinking that people were dumping it there. I says, no, that's the city picking up all that and putting the pile. But they did take it away because it was sitting there for like three or four days, but they did, did take it away. So I want to be glad on that. The other thing is, I want to make a comment that your, your volunteers are great. They do a lot of great work, you know, and you say you have 51. I hope you get 200 because you need them. But no, if I become one, can I drive a patrol car with the lights and sirens right up and down Olive?
We try to avoid sitting them out with lights and siren, but we really appreciate all the hard work they do. A lot of times, they come out and they take over traffic direction at crime scenes. So we can free the officers up and send the officers back out to respond to calls for service. So they do a fantastic job for us.
They do. I appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am.
You're more than welcome. Mr. Rivera?
First question, I think it was last year, I think we rolled out a program to use cameras for our police officers. Is that still in being implemented, or are we still trying that program out?
Vice Mayor Rivera, I think you may be referring to the body worn cameras. Okay. We took a look at the initial body worn cameras that a couple of companies were, had manufactured. The one that we really looked at was manufactured by Taser. The officers didn't like it because of the size of the camera at the time. Taser has since gone back, and they've modified that camera. We actually had a demonstration from two companies that were done about two weeks ago. So we're going to look at testing those cameras probably within the next month or so. But we haven't made a decision yet on whether or not we want to move forward with any body worn cameras yet.
So at one point or another, you might be coming back to the council and asking for funds for that program?
That's a possibility based on how the testing and evaluation process goes, and then also looking at some of the other concerns we have regarding body worn cameras.
Okay. Fuel cost increase, is that just an ongoing item?
That'll be an ongoing item. Yes, sir.
Same amount as last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Overtime, that's $75,000. Is that also ongoing?
It may be. Right now, we're looking at that to supplement some of the staffing issues that we've had. You know, officers have gone out sick, officers have gone out on FMLA, retirements, resignations. So we'll, we will be looking at that on an annual basis and making a decision whether or not we need to continue that as an ongoing funding stream.
Why wouldn't increasing our FTEs, and I know it would be a little bit more expensive, be a consideration versus having overtime ongoing?
Well, it's a very good question. And we look at that, and what we do is, when we look at our overtime, we look at whether or not this is overtime that is just occurring at that moment, or if this is something we anticipate to continue to occur over and over and over again. If we see where our staffing issues are at the point where we're continuing to incur overtime on a fairly regular basis, then we probably do need to look at staffing issues.
Special Investigations Unit funding. That's an item. Can you speak to that?
Which page are you on, Councilmember?
663 on your supplemental request.
Okay. That's a supplemental request to assist with additional money that our narcotics unit uses. Some of, what they do during a lot of these investigations is they go out and they actually have to make purchases sometimes to assist with the investigation and furthering the investigation. Sometimes when they, when we increase the number of investigations that we're doing, there may not be enough funding there. So they've asked for some additional funding in the budget to assist with the increase in investigations.
Okay. That leads me to my next question, which is a broad question. With the ever, ever increasing war on drugs nationwide, and the bad guys always getting better at what they do, becoming more sophisticated, what is our police department doing in that area to adjust to the new trends and to attack the new drugs that are out there on the street?
Okay. Vice Mayor Rivera, one of the things that we've done this year is we've put a real heavy emphasis on two things, guns and drugs. And with the assistance of members of our community, we've put some programs in place to assist us with doing a better job of communicating and a better job and assist members of our community with communicating narcotics information to us. We've got our tip soft program where members of our community can send in anonymous text messages to us. That's been very beneficial for us and has been very well received by members of the community. Of course, we also have our narcotics hotline where people can call in anonymous narcotics tips to us. Personnel-wise, we're very aggressive in looking at narcotics-related issues going on, not just in Peoria, but also in the area surrounding Peoria. Because if they're in the area surrounding us, there's a possibility we may face those challenges at some point in time. So we still have an officer assigned to a Drug Enforcement Administration Task Force. He works on a federal task force. So if there are large-scale narcotics issues going on in the area, we have a direct contact with that officer. We also still have an officer assigned to the State Gang Task Force. So that's a great assistance for us with narcotics-related incidents. And then we also have an intergovernmental agreement with the postal service. So we keep an eye on narcotics that may be coming in via the postal service. As far as monitoring narcotics activity, we have a weekly problem-solving meeting where we address narcotics, property, violent crime-related incidents. And then we also have a monthly meeting where we continue to look at those situations.
Okay. In the past, we had a gangs unit. Is that going to be a consideration in the future, and why the change?
Well, I'm not sure. It was actually a gang unit. I think it was more referred to as a tactical response investigative unit that also assisted with gang investigations and narcotics-related investigations.
So it wasn't specific only to-
No, it was not specific to being a gang unit.
Okay. You're talking about replacement of vehicles, the Crown Victoria. I don't know if this has ever been done in the police department, but this is something I'm going to ask. Chief Reese, I was recently at an economic development summit in Nogales, Sonora. I met with some government officials there, and we're talking about an exchange program. Is this something that's done? I know it's done on the fire side, but is this something that's considered in the police side as far as donating some of these vehicles that we no longer use or replace?
To my knowledge, I do not believe we've ever been involved in a program like that, but I'd have to get some background and some historical information on that.
If you could pursue that, and I'll be following up with you on it. Thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Yes. I first would like to address the performance report on 658. And I'm looking at the last one there, percent of citizens rating the overall service. And you're using excellent and satisfactory, so the other side would be unsatisfactory, right?
Correct.
And how are you measuring that?
What we do is, on a monthly basis, we have three volunteers in the department, and they randomly pick different reports that the officers have completed. And they call on an average of anywhere from 10 to 12 citizens. And there's a series of questions that they ask the citizens. Do you live in Aurora? But more importantly, were you satisfied with the response you received from the member of the Peoria Police Department? Was the officer professional and courteous? Did the officer answer all your questions? Did the officer meet the needs that you expected from the response that you received from the member of the Peoria Police Department? So we do that on a monthly basis. I get a-
And that's a follow-up after the-
That's a follow-up after. Yes, sir.
And then you have 85% as your target. Is that a good target? Do you know what other police departments are achieving here?
Well, I'm not sure what other police departments are achieving as far as their citizen satisfaction goal. Ours, we set ours at 85%, but always, also, our goal is always 100%. But we looked at 85% as a starting point, but we always strive for 100%.
Right. And this isn't 85% are just emphatically happy. It's satisfied, right? As opposed to dissatisfied.
I don't know if I'd even call 85% satisfied, but, but I, I'd say it'd get a chuckle out of me.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate you, you know, working on that because we know how important it is if citizens are happy with the police satisfied. That really helps everything that you do, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Okay. My next question is in terms of your expenditures by division on 659. And I noticed the percentages vary, going from Neighborhood Services down to, I guess, Federal Forestry. Is, did you kind of reorganize things in how you were spending the money, or?
Okay. No, Katie, did you, did you want to make that one?
I mean- They always know there's some kind of inside way of it.
On a number of these, for example, in Neighborhood Services, there were some one-time funding associated with that in fiscal year 13 that's not being funded in fiscal year 14. That would be the same with Patrol Services. I guess that would be Patrol Services North. I think it's a variety of things.
Is one-time funding, in some areas, not in others?
That's a majority in some of the areas.
Okay.
Right. And some of the new, this also includes some of the new supplements that you just saw the chief talk about.
So this wasn't a major restructuring that you did, no?
No.
Okay.
No.
And my last question, you had mentioned that program for predicting where crime is going to occur. Which one was that on the supplemental list? Because I think that's a super idea. If we can be there before the criminal is, that's outstanding, right?
Councilmember Ames?
And I know a lot of that works, doesn't it?
Yes. Page 663?
Excuse me?
Page six-sixty-three.
Yeah, I'm on that page, right.
Okay. And the second from the bottom, Analytical Software.
Okay, it's that one. Okay. It's under anti-racketeering. Okay. Are those outside funds we've gotten for that, or?
Yes.
Okay. Outstanding. Good. I'd like to come over and look at that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, just a couple of questions. Have you looked at any grants available for your vehicles, if there's any grants available?
I'm not aware of any grants that are available for vehicles.
Okay. All right. Maybe you could have Tammy look into that for you down the road. Second question is, you're Park Ranger. I'm assuming that that person is not a sworn officer.
No, sir.
So, what authority do they have when they are in a park? And, how safe are they if there's, say, drug activity going on? What can they and can they not do?
Well, Councilmember Patena, we make it very clear to them that they are not a law enforcement officer. And, if they're ever in any type of situation where they feel that their safety is in danger, they are to, I mean, they have radios, they have computers in the cars. They are to immediately call and request for a sworn officer to come by and assist them with whatever they're dealing with. So, we make it very clear to them. Their safety, of course, we take very serious. And, when we hear them call out on something, if there's an officer who's available in the area, he or she will try and go by and assist them and make sure they're okay. But, we make it very clear to them that they're not law enforcement officers. And, if they ever get into a situation, they feel uncomfortable, feel their safety may be at risk, they make sure they call us.
Last question, on your tabletop exercises that are going on in the schools, can you just give me a very brief overview of what those consist of?
Sure. Councilmember Patena and members of the council, what we do is we go into the schools, and we take a team of police officers. It's usually a supervisor, an officer, and usually a lieutenant. And, we meet with school officials. And, it's usually the principal, the vice-principal, the administrative staff, and maybe usually even the custodian. And, we will give them a scenario. And, it may be two students get into a fight in a classroom, one student pulls out a weapon, fires the weapon, the, another student is struck by the weapon, the teacher tries to intervene, the teacher is then injured, and the student with the weapon then takes off and runs down the hallway. And then, we ask them to take over the scenario from there. The purpose of the tabletop exercises is to make sure that law enforcement has a very good understanding of what type of response the school is prepared for and what they have in place, but also to give them an idea of what type of response to expect when law enforcement arrives. This has been very beneficial for us here in Peoria, because we've been able to point out certain, a lot of things during the tabletop exercises that the school officials never really thought about, like setting up an area where they could set up a command center, making sure they're able to communicate with different schools, the different students in the schools, but also making sure that there's some way for us to be, some way for us to get in the school once we arrive. They're really good on locking down the school, and then we say, okay, now when we show up, how we're gonna get in. So, those are some of the things we point out to them during the tabletop exercise that they didn't really think about before we sat down. And, the good thing about the tabletop exercises is we tell them, it's really good for us to have the discussion and for you to be prepared prior to something happen. Heaven forbid anything happen, but if you're trying to think about what you should do in the middle of a crisis, that usually doesn't work.
Ms. Carlott?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to go back to the Park Ranger Program for a minute here. You've got a really big and very successful, by the way, department, so thank you for that, and also thank you for all those revenue offsets. But, you've got like two-hundred-and-eighty-nine employees, and five of them are Park Rangers.
Correct.
Six now, Park Rangers. And, you know, we originally brought the Park Ranger Program into the police department because we were hoping that it would be sort of a multiplier for that program. I'm not quite sure that that has been successful, that that program is where it belongs. And, I would like to kind of rethink the Park Ranger Program. You know, it is seasonal. Maybe we, maybe we contract out some services during part of the year. Maybe we have some, you know, our city is geographically challenging, you know, for them to get from one area to the next takes a long time. When they get there, if there's an issue, they're not sworn, they have to call nine-one-one. I guess I'm questioning this, the setup of this program and its effectiveness, the way it's set up right now. If it stays in the police department, you know, and I guess I'm asking for a recommendation from you, and you might want to do some analysis on that, but if it stays in your department, should we attribute some more volunteers to that program? Should we have some more contractual employees that help with that? There are certain times of the year when hiking is a big deal. And, we need to put, we need to have Rangers on our trails. And, we don't always have that. There's just not enough of them, obviously, to even span the whole city. So, I am questioning our Park Ranger Program. I'm questioning their placement in the police department. I'm questioning the way they're staffed, and I'm questioning the coverage that they're able to be successful at doing. So, I'd like to either ask the questions of you now and get your opinion on it, or say that we want to bring it back at the end of this. I'd like to do some analysis and decide if we need to keep it where it is or change it.
Well, Councilmember Carlott, here's what I can tell you preliminarily regarding the Park Ranger Program. It has worked really well in the police department, because a lot of the things, sometimes some of the things that are going on in the parks are police-related. So, it's really good for us to have that close relationship with our Park Rangers. And, we monitor activities going on in the park on a weekly and a monthly basis. So, the relationship has worked really well. We do realize that we face some challenges because of how spread out our parks are in the city and the number of Park Rangers that we have. And, it's part of the reason why we've implemented our Park Watch Program, which a lot of communities have been very interested in, and are really starting to participate in, in adopting a park and participating in the Park Watch Program. We also have been very aggressive in encouraging our officers during the times where they have to write a report, or they're out during patrol, to spend a little more time in the parks. And, if you have to write a report and you're near a park, to try and spend time writing that report in a park. So, we're doing the best we can to supplement the Park Ranger staffing in our parks.
Okay. So, it sounds like you believe they should still stay in your department?
Yes, I do believe that the police department is a good place for a Park Ranger Program.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. But, I would like to hear more ways, maybe towards the end, that they can be supplemented. And, it doesn't have to be with sworn officers, maybe some of your volunteers. And, I like your idea about adopting parks. We could have that be adopting trails, and maybe we could publicize that a little more and, I don't know, put up plaques or signs or things like that to really make sure that people know that those are being monitored.
Yeah, absolutely. And, so you know, Councilmember Carlott, our volunteers, especially our patrol volunteers who are out in patrol vehicles, they also assist with patrolling the parks and assisting the Park Rangers. So, they're another great resource for us.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Mr. Leoni, do you have follow-up questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. You say you have police officers at all the schools, and how long are they there?
Well, Councilmember Leoni, they're not there permanently. What we encourage the officers to do is during their times where they're not responding to calls for service, if they're in the area of the schools, to stop in the schools and just kind of walk around and make them, make their presence known in the schools. So, we refer to that as our Patrol Officer Liaison Program, because each one of the officers has a specific school that the officer is responsible for visiting on a regular basis.
Are they there in the morning when it opens up, and at night when it gets out? Or, how do they work that?
It depends on what they're doing and what the calls for service load is. If they're not that busy during the morning, they're usually there in the morning when school starts. If they're not that busy in the afternoon, they're usually there in the afternoon when the school is over.
And also, on that, what Kathy was talking about, on that Park Rangers, you know, when I first started, I think, Bob, we only had one, was it? And, now we get six. And, you know, and like you say, when you get more volunteers, maybe you can put them out there. Personally, I think the Park Rangers are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Don't get me wrong. The police are probably doing a great job. But, when I was at Rio Vista last week on my kids', my granddaughter, my great-grandkid's birthday, I saw a Park Ranger on a bike. Now, is there only one up there, or is there two? Because I've only seen the one, as long as I was up there, five hours.
Yeah, usually at Rio Vista, there's usually only one. Sometimes, when the other Park Rangers are making their rounds, another Park Ranger may join that Park Ranger. But, we try and keep a minimum of one Park Ranger at Rio Vista at all times.
Look, so, there's only one Park Ranger at Rio Vista at all times. Maybe we should hire two or three more. I support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. The next one up is the Fire Department, and Chief Reese is here, and it starts on page three-eighty-four.
Mayor, council members, I don't know if you have a screen in front of you or not. But, I do have a book in front of me, so.
There it is. What, I'm sorry.
The monitors. But, I have a book in front of me, so as long as you can see what's there, I'm good. I think so. I think Chief Minter did before he left.
Blame it on the police department.
Okay. So, Fire Department is broken up into seven major areas. Admin, which is the basically chief and staff running the department, and Fire Prevention that involves the plans review for fire and inspections and the fire investigation. Support Services is our folks that take care of and maintain our vehicles, our trucks, and our self-contained breathing apparatus, and all of other equipment associated with it. Emergency Medical is our folks that keep our medics, our paramedics, and our EMTs trained and equipped. Fire Training is all the other training of fire. We still do some fires and hazmat and technical training. Emergency Management is the management preparedness that works through all these disaster scenarios that connects with other cities and counties and getting us ready for the big one. And, Fire Operations is the folks that actually respond to the incidents and the big red trucks out there. Our, we provide, the big four services that we're providing is, again, medical services, which is about eighty-three percent of our business. We are a medical company. We still do fire protection and fire suppression, technical rescue, and the hazmat, as I mentioned before. This is a way we're broken down up in the city with two battalions, eight fire companies, two ladders, hazmat truck, technical truck. Brush trucks that are part of a station, so somebody will jump from another apparatus onto the brush trucks and the fire boat that is up at our lake and manned by Engine One-Ninety-seven, also co-staffed. Primary Counsel goes to enhancing current services and leadership and images. Our key service outcomes that we're looking for is simply to respond effectively and efficiently to all fires, medical calls, and all other emergencies that were called upon very quickly and taking care of the problem. Making sure that when we leave there, that the customers feel better than when we got there. And, sometimes difficult to do, but again, we understand that it's more than just the immediate patient or the immediate fire that we're dealing with, that there's collateral, and we try to assist and provide for those folks also. Other things that we're expanding, or we provide services for, is fire prevention in our inspection services and trying to keep the place safe. One of the things that our neighbors, the other P to the east, has done is look at, instead of fire loss, they've looked at the impacts by saving property. And, when you look at a fire and the occupancy that it may involve, it just doesn't involve that occupancy. So, the faster you can get that business back into business and minimize the collateral damages to other businesses and try to keep them in businesses, is what we try to do with our fire prevention folks. Adult education and our education for our children is we try to do it in every opportunity we can. We go to the store, if we go to a call, and after the call, there's usually a gathering by the truck, is we try to do some public education at every touch with a customer. Some of our new budget additions in the maintenance or maintained services is there's an increase to the CAD system. That's the computer-aided dispatch system that we have with contract with Phoenix in the consortium. The increase in volumes of our calls as well as calls in throughout the valley have increased that calls by almost sixty thousand. So, that'll be an ongoing cost, usually increased every five years or so. So, that's a cost that we need to pay up. Management Analyst is one that we lost years ago, and we're just trying to reinstate our individual that will help with accreditation, some of the budget analysis, ICMA reporting, and grant management, to name a few. Increase in amount of dedicated overtime. Over the years, we've increased the number of staff in the Fire Department. We've kind of fallen behind on meeting the overtime to keep the service delivery staffing at the level that we need to. And, this will get us back on course to do that. City and professional memberships, this is with the wireless membership for our members, so that we can call them back in either individually or in masses if we need to. The ALS/BLS training is also an increase with some of the recent personnel that we increased the department with, and thus the increase in some of the training and certifications. Overtime for investigations, over the last couple of years, we have seen an increase in fires by about three, four hundred calls, actual calls in the city. Just, the city's growing, and we're having need to do some more education, as far as safety education, in the homes. And, we're looking at into the future to do that. But, in the meantime, our calls have increased and our investigations' time has increased. And, so, this will kind of stay up with the trend that we're seeing over the last couple of years. The replacement assets and system, EMS equipment and supplies, this is pretty much some of the equipment that we're gonna replace that just have become, come to age. Some of the warranties that are coming due this year, the five-year warranties that are coming due on a lot of our equipment, especially the heart monitors and associated equipment with the heart monitors, and some of the batteries that are good for about three years that we gotta replace. So, it just, that, this year, that, the bulk of it is hitting. The technical rescue certifications, we're just, to keep our numbers for service delivery, what we're starting to see is attrition. And, so, this is just trying to keep up with attrition and certify two to three members a year to keep up with that, the attrition rates. We're starting to see some burnouts, so starting to see some people wanting to leave some of those specialized programs. So, we'll be doing, looking at this and the trend as we go into the future. Training supplies, same thing there is, they've increased in cost, and that's... Training supplies, same thing there, is they've increased in cost, and that's an ongoing cost that we will increase. Part of that is also a electronic system that we're delivering a lot of training and saving on overtime by bringing people on overtime for that type of training and instead doing it based on the web. And so, that system is part of that cost. The support services building that we purchased and we're starting to get ready to move in also comes with a ticket item of electricity, water, and other supplies, and that's what that forty-five thousand is a year. And I'll go ahead and answer any questions and try to...
Mr. Rivera?
Take my water close.
Thank you, Chief Reese, for the presentation. In the past, we had a fire marshal position. There's been a change in that area?
Yes. What we did is, we had a change in some of the staffing and the administration where we moved in some of the deputy chiefs that were in the field as managing one of the battalions. We have two battalions. We had the three battalions, A, B, and C, managing one battalion in the north, and then we had deputies managing the other battalion in the south. It may have been a good idea at one time, but it just hasn't morphed the way it should've, and so it's morphed into essentially two battalions and with nobody overseeing the two battalions times the three shifts. So, it makes sense to start shifting some of the personnel from admin to the positions in the field. For example, we have a training chief in admin, that's a battalion chief level. So, we swapped that one for one of the deputies to bring into admin and made him the ops chief that will take care of all the battalions and keep them on the same page, and sent that individual, that was a BC, out into the field. With the position that you're talking about, the fire marshal's position, we took the opportunity and downgraded that to a battalion chief and brought one of the deputies into that spot. So, it gave us the opportunity to bring all three deputies into admin and downgrade the battalion to the appropriate level of battalion chiefs.
In regards to the management analysts, who's been performing that work for the last couple of years?
I'm sorry?
For the management analysts, I know you're requesting a new position.
It's been split up among some of the chief officers, and they've been struggling very much with it because they're just not accustomed to doing analysis to those levels, to doing accreditation to those levels. So, we've been struggling over the last few years with the existing staff members.
Just encouraging you in this area, with opportunities being very limited, we could look at hiring internally for that position or looking at candidates internally?
Absolutely.
Standby overtime for mechanics, is that ever used or is it just something we have for rare situations?
The trucks break down at every given time of the day or night, and so at night, we put them, we have one mechanic on standby to be uncalled, respond to going and towing in a truck and working on it at odd hours of the night. So, that's kind of ongoing for that need.
And my next comment slash question, and this doesn't only apply to the first positions, I'm talking about firefighters, captains, engineers, and even up to management, what will you be doing to diversify your workforce? And I'm referring to women, minorities?
Very good question. One thing that we're doing is we're looking at the test that we've used, and we're looking at the validation of that test because it didn't yield a lot of females in that grouping, which I found unusual on the written part of it, because females usually do very good on the written part. And on this one particular company that we use, national company, it was venting out. So, we're looking at perhaps creating our own tool or borrowing a tool from one of our neighbors that do their own in-house testing. There's also a high school here in Peoria that has a fire curriculum that I'm now sitting on the board that will be looking at their students to recruit from and hopefully get on our department and get that diversity that we needed from those groups. And we're also visiting with a lot of the different ethnic groups that are around the valley that can provide some of the candidates and some of the colleges.
Well, thank you for your leadership in that area. I mentioned this briefly to Chief Mentor in regards to fire trucks or any equipment. As I mentioned, I went down to Nogalesona and met with some elected officials from south of the border, and we briefly discussed, you know, Sister Cities program. I don't know the specifics, but that's something I want to talk to you about. Can you talk about your experience as far as donations and exchange programs with cities down south that might need help?
My experience has been with, of course, with Phoenix over the last thirty-seven years, but they had a program where they sold for a dollar some of the salvage equipment that really wouldn't bring too much money but back into the system, to the coffer, but was still usable and had some use life. And so, they had a program through the Sister City Commission that way. They also, we also had, we, Phoenix had a language program that went with their sister city in Hermosillo in an exchange program and received immersion classes in Spanish there in Hermosillo.
Okay. Look forward to talking to you about that in the near future. Last subject, I want to touch on overtime. What's the total amount of money that is allocated for overtime?
Right now, as far as for coverage, where people are off on leave, it's three-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars that we have currently. And again, we're, this hundred-and-five thousand will bring us to the level we need to be. The other thing that we're doing with budgeting is Barry Vogel is doing some analysis for us to looking at overtime versus FTEs in the way of rovers, where you have extra bodies that will fill in when people are off on leave, and kind of looking at what the balancing point of overtime versus FTEs as far as in form of rovers are, so that we'll continue that discussion throughout the year.
Okay. What's your professional opinion on increasing FTEs? I'm talking about firefighters, so we could reduce overtime.
It's a balancing act. Some cities do it more with overtime than they do with FTEs because it's about one-third the cost than an FTE. However, there is a balancing point because you can have all the money you want, and if people don't want to work, then you're having to be real creative and ask who wants to work. And you might have a captain working as a firefighter because you can't find anybody else to keep up the service delivery.
Okay. Thank you for your leadership also in that area and holding the line on overtime.
Thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Yes, I've been looking at the different percentage increases, and your department is higher than average, eight-point-two-one, and I see it's kind of spread equally between personal services and contractual services. So, I'm wondering what's driving that, and I see you got a large increase in emergency medical services in that area.
What page are you looking?
I'm looking at 387, the summary.
Councilmember...
And a large increase in fire administration. I think the fire administration is the additional person, right?
That is correct. The fire administration is the management analyst. In the emergency medical services, there is the one-time supplemental that Chief Reese just went through. That's driving the majority of that cost. On the personnel services, one thing to remember is that last year, after the budget was adopted, if you recall, we received the SAFER grant, which allowed us to hire six additional firefighters for, to provide service up at Lake Pleasant. So, that's some of the increase as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bettina?
Thank you, Mayor. Carl, I have a question for you. This year, during the not-for-profit hearings, the Peoria Citizens Corps Council came before us and requested just under five thousand dollars for a live-fire extinguisher system. And I guess the current system is no longer operational, and I think they do demonstrations for citizens with that piece of equipment. It's the recommendation, the mayor asked me to chair that committee on his behalf this year, and Councilmember Ames is on that, and this year, Councilmember Leone was on it, and it is a recommendation of that group that that item be put on the supplemental for fire this year. So, I just want to make you aware of that.
Very good. Thanks for passing that along, and we'll put it on the list. Thank you.
Ms. Carly?
The SAFER grant paid for those six firefighters for two years, right?
Correct.
And we don't show it as a revenue offset, but it was a really great revenue offset, a really, really great one. And I'd like to be able to look at that number and say, that was something that is being contributed to our fire department without us having to pay for it. Really nice.
You are correct. It was, for the first two years, covered. The cost for those personnel were covered. We don't show it because truly we have an ongoing requirement for that, so we budget for those as if they're an ongoing requirement, recognizing for two years, fortunately, we get that reimbursed back to the city.
Okay.
So, we show that on the revenue side as revenue that's coming into the city, but it's not, you know, ongoing revenue.
Sure. Still.
I understand. I understand your point.
You bet. We'll note it as the offset that it is. You bet.
Okay. And so, my question is, we have a fireboat, and now we're fully staffed and fully trained, correct? Can you tell me how things are going with the fireboat and if we've been able to help our citizens do some rescues and how great it's been?
It's grown real well, and, of course, and you don't expect me to say anything different.
No.
But we finally have a permanent group there that they bid for, and they're up in training, and so we're doing well. We responded to a couple of fires and a couple of rescues that were surface rescues, luckily, because we're not equipped to do submersion rescues yet. So, I said that from the beginning, that the boat and that whole rescue activity will morph into more than what we're doing now. And, but we're coming up to the busy season and keeping everybody trained up. We have a lot of people that are trained up as backup, so we didn't lose the original people that were there. I think you wrote a while back when we first received the boat, and we had trained up some temporary folks, and so we haven't lost that cadre of folks as backup when those people are on leave or on any absence as we have those people. Plus, we've expanded the basic training on boat safety and whatnot through the web training that we're doing to the entire department. So, we're geared up.
Good. I'm really glad to hear that. And also, you know, as we expand our department and expand our training, I'm glad to see that we are getting the equipment to go with it. You know, we have the all-terrain vehicle, we've got more brush trucks, we've, you know, we've got the things that we need for the environment that we're in, especially in the northern part of the city, and obviously to make sure that we keep up our technical rescue training. So, I appreciate you making sure that we have budget money for those kinds of things. And just, you know, on one more note, I just want to say that under your department functions, you left off role model, and I'm not sure why, because I know that that's a really big deal. The fire department is a role model for a lot of the citizens, especially a lot of the young ones, and people aspire to be like you. So, I really appreciate the way you so ethically and morally present yourself, and it makes the city of Peoria look good.
Back to your council.
Thanks.
Questions or comments? I have one about...
Sure.
In 2007, my first year as mayor, we went to Emmettsville, Emmitsburg, Maryland, with the FEMA thing. I don't remember if it's a Ville or a Burg, in Maryland, and it was the FEMA course. And I think it's time for the city to do it again. FEMA reimburses airfare for everyone who attends, and it'd be a great way to update our emergency operations plan. I haven't heard any discussions about it in years. I seriously doubt that we've found a good alternative location for the emergency operations center, should there be a disaster at the City Hawk complex. I think it's time to take a look at that. It's relatively inexpensive. FEMA reimburses most costs. They provide rooming. Meals are like a hundred bucks per person for the week.
Correct.
So, it's, it was a fantastic experience, and most everybody that was there, no longer here. New fire chief, new police chief, new city manager, new assistant city managers. It's time for the city to do that. If we can't, and I know you have to get in line with FEMA and everything else...
Correct.
If you can't do it this year, I strongly urge this city to get in line and do it as soon as possible.
Mayor, I'll start looking into it as far as the logistics of getting in line.
Thank you. With that, we're done with our list?
We are. I would like to congratulate the council. We are done with our list. If the council would like to continue, we certainly have additional folks here who can continue the conversation, but we are done with the list we had planned for this evening.
I know they would love to come back again tomorrow for more of this. What's the will of the council? You done? Pick up tomorrow?
Yeah.
We're done. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.
Thank you very much.